Mr. Marshall and Mr. Chuck Fowler. We have Mr. President as well as Mr. George Johnson, the main speaker. You want to start on the first item?
Yes, sir. Item number one is to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter a quick clean deed for a lot of parcel of ground located in Section 32 Township 4 North, Range 2 West located in Calhoun Commercial Park 1. And this is a piece of property, Mr. Chairman, that I think the size is sixty by one hundred. It's located within the intersection of I-49 and Air Base Road. There was a...
Error. Was that in the recitation of the...
A section number. And this is just clearing up this situation with the Calhoun property.
Move.
Second. All in favor, senior? Say aye. Pose. Okay.
Second on the...
Item number two is to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending the professional service agreements with special alonadir of his services as right-of-way agents and planner for the city planning division.
Move.
Well, it was not in the recitation of the compensation, but it's in there now, right?
Yes, sir. It's thirty-five dollars an hour.
I'll be sure that you're aware of that.
Okay. Second?
Thirty-five dollars.
Yes, sir.
Same report. All in favor, senior? Am I saying aye? Pose. Okay.
Item number three is to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to exercise the city's option to renew the existing contract without buying lawn and landscape for landscape maintenance services for assorted public facilities for a period of twelve months. And this is a contract that we have that Jim Liggins is involved with, that Darren Green is the administrator, and involves the community centers and the mini parks. And we recommend extending the contract for twelve months.
Move.
I'd like the city to turn over the votes now. They've done a great job over there.
Yes, they have.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next, I think, on four and five is sort of like crisscross, so you might be able to get it.
Right. Yes, sir. We were looking at the agenda, and item five should come before four because five has to do with the adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a subdivision filing plan for Villarochelle Phase Three, which includes lots twenty-six A, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight. And we recommend approval.
Move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
And item number four, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of streets and drainage improvements for Villarochelle Subdivision Phase One, Two, and Phase Three.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Item number six is to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a subdivision plan for Albertson Subdivision Units One for lots two A and lot two B. And what they're doing is that they're separating the gas pumps from the storage cell.
Any objection to that?
No move.
Second. All in favor, senior?
Aye.
Pose. Same time. Okay.
Item number seven, to hear an update report from the administration concerning Coffin and Sanders.
Hi, I am Mr. Silver. Currently, there is a meeting scheduled for July ninth at ten-thirty, members of the council. At that meeting, we're going to formulate the initial plan of work. We've had some difficulties getting everybody together in the same room at the same time. As y'all know, there are a number of people involved in this project, Quicken Associates, Kevin Broussard, who's this local architect, the lawyers from Baton Rouge from Montgomery Barnett, and the lawyers in my office. We've succeeded in doing that. We're all going to meet on July the ninth. We'll come up with the plan of work, and we expect to begin construction within thirty days. We're back there.
That confirms the vision.
Yes.
The committee made by...
Yes. That'll bring everything into compliance with the original memorandum of understanding.
Okay. Now, the next one?
The next one, number eight, is to hear an update report on fast-track projects. Last Friday, I was asked Eric Duck to contact our consultants and also our people in house to give us an update on the report, and Eric is here today to give you a report.
Okay. First project, number one, Versailles Boulevard. That's moving along very well. I have one item. On the last sentence, I have Phase One preliminary plan. It should be Phase Two preliminary plans. I just reviewed those last week, got with the engineer today, and went over those recommended changes, and we're pushing forward with that. Also, two parcels have been acquired through donations, so that part of the project is moving along. I'd also like to bring you up to date on number five, Hyman Lane, Phase One, twenty-eight to Castle Road. Project is under construction with drainage pipe going in the ground, so they're stirring up some dust and stuff out there. I was out there about a week or so ago, and I saw some dust, and I asked them where their water truck was, so they scrambled around and got a water truck out there. I said, "I haven't gotten a complaint yet, but it's just a matter of time." So I think they did that. Of course, recently, we've been having rain. Number seven, moving along, we've acquired the right-of-way that was still pending. The traffic signal is being put into the project for the Walmart site as part of the project, and we'll be setting a bid date shortly on that, coming to y'all to ask them to release it for bids. Number nine, Lincoln Road reconstruction. They've done the preliminary, the design survey, and they've done the program completion phase, and the engineers proceeding with preliminary design. Next page, Mack Adams Ditch, Mack Arthur to existing concrete vertical channel is progressing. We're supposed to have a pre-construction conference July the fifth, so the contractor's ready to go to work. Number sixteen, Hudson Boulevard Drainage Improvements. The design survey is complete. I've met with the engineer on it, on the program completion, and he's ready to begin on the preliminary design phase. Moving down to number nineteen, Prescott Road Drainage. About the same situation. I've met, they've done the survey. I've met with the engineer, authorized them to go forth with the preliminary design. Number twenty-one, first phase, of course, of that is under construction or basically finished. Phase Two plans have been reviewed, and the final plans are being drawn. Number twenty-two, extension of Cloverleaf. That's, of course, into the Walmart properties or next to the Walmart properties, I should say. Contractor has been selected, and work will begin probably this month. Bayou Robert at Landmark, Phase Five. The city has purchased the land it needed to purchase to mitigate the wetlands, and the pre-construction conference should be scheduled in a couple of weeks. Acadian Park, number twenty-five, bids were sealed on this project, and the contract awarded. Construction has begun, so it's moving along. Next page, on number twenty-eight, Bayou Rapid Multi-Use. We've gotten the word that the state is prepared to put this out to bids between this month and June of two thousand and eight, so everything is basically complete. I think we have three servitudes to get that the city is doing, and we'll have those shortly.
Is that funding allocated for that?
Yes. State funding and city funding.
Is there a question?
Yes, sir.
I see that, you know, like you said, it's under design and we'll be ready to bid. I've talked to you already of design.
Oh, yes, sir. If I had that in here, I probably should have taken that out and just say it's complete. It's just waiting until the funding is voted. It's, we're not in construction yet, so we're kind of still in design, but I mean, the design has been completed.
Would you rather pull it, or are you going to still go through?
No, we're still, we're still here to go on through it. We've been waiting on this for six years, you know, it's long enough.
Right. Well, that project's going to connect two existing trails, so it's very well needed. Moving on to thirty, Enterprise Road Drainage Sidewalk Improvements. Design survey was done. I met with the engineer, and we discussed the design of the project, authorized him to go forward with the preliminary design.
Can I see this one time?
I'm sorry?
I'd like, that's one I'd like to see also.
Yeah, we're...
That's one that's...
It's going all the way from Highway One all the way to one sixty-five, to lower pass. Probably a real little realignment for that bad curve. Cover up those old ditches and put some sidewalks in. Be a nice improvement.
I'm afraid somebody's going to get hurt in that.
Yes, sir. Please, Dan. Number thirty-three, the fence to Cobb Course. Contractor has gotten the contracts. He's contacted me. He needs to set up some conference times and stuff, so we're working toward that and hopefully have him busy shortly. That's all that I have is highlighted. That was some major change from last time that I thought you may want to, but there are a few other changes in some of the other projects. And of course, they're color-coded like they were last time, so hopefully it makes it convenient for you. If you need additional information, I'll be glad to provide that whenever I can.
I did have one question on the Hyman Lane, Castle Road.
Yes, sir.
All of us realize on the construction, is it maintaining or adhering to their schedule? Are they okay on that?
I think so. I don't, I don't think they're, yeah, I don't think they're, they've been hurt by any of these rains or anything. It's moving along pretty good.
Some huge pipe. I went down and looked at it the other day. Walking that stuff.
Yeah, shouldn't, shouldn't flow around here.
I'm telling you.
Thank you very much. Mayor, do you want to run for any more of the fast track? I would ask the same question. Are we a little team to move a quicker fast track? I'm still very much on your side.
I think we are, except there are some things that have made Versailles get a little behind, and I think that we need to correct those things. There are certain persons that had property along that, in that area, that I think maybe there was an original understanding, there would be donations, that maybe some of that has changed. So we are, we are dealing with some right-of-way issues on Versailles. They shouldn't put us too much out, and we'll be back on track.
Thank you. Chair?
Please, on that engine isolation, you want to bring down the bit so that we can set up our engine isolation. Okay. Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, we have two, we have two or three that, you know, they probably need to be put out and started.
Okay. And then, did you have something else at this meeting, on the mosquito abatement?
Yes, sir. Mr. Silver, on yesterday, I faxed a letter to the mayor of Pineville, Clarence Fields, giving him notice of our intention to help the city of Pineville with the mosquito abatement. We have a resolution, which I'd like to introduce tonight. It's titled, "A Resolution Authorizing the City of Alexandria to Assist the City of Pineville with Mosquito Abatement Prior to the July Fourth Fireworks Over Bulow Event." The way that we wanted to handle the matter procedurally was to ask the council to take up the resolution today so that Ms. Lawson can authorize her employees to go ahead and do the spraying, and then I'll follow with an intergovernmental agreement at the next meeting, as is under the requirement.
So...
I'll move.
Bring me up to speed, I know what you're talking about.
There's no intergovernmental agreement with Pineville to do this. Because of the fact that we're not having an event this fourth, we were always involved with Uncle Sam Jam with Pineville, and that is not going to happen this year. That's a private concern. We know that citizens of Alexandria will be going to Pineville to enjoy those fireworks. Mosquitoes can be a problem. We're not even sure if we're going to be able to do it. Ms. Lawson has determined that it will not in any way impair our ability to provide for our own citizens in terms of existing stock for larvicide and other things. And of course, the larvicide doesn't really help. That's, that's about killing the larva. That isn't going to help tonight, but Pineville has asked for some assistance. They're willing to pay, so this isn't a giveaway. The problem is, without an existing IGA, we can't authorize our employees to go help them. We can neither do that nor can we enter into any kind of agreement in one night here. So what we were seeking from the council was simply a resolution that this body would in fact, in essence, like a letter of intent, that you would agree that you will pass that ordinance if it meets your specifications. When we presented it, it'll have to be presented next meeting and passed a meeting after that. The IGA would include future endeavors so that this doesn't come up again. If there's an emergency item between the two cities, we can address those items. They have no mosquito abatement program, not because there's a lot of testing and certification involved, and we're lucky to have a state-recognized program here, so they, they actually need our help. It almost fits under the governmental services law, which would allow an emergency situation, as I discussed with Mr. Silver today. We indicated his support for it as chairman of that committee. It almost is authorized under that, but to be perfectly transparent and upfront about it, we wanted to pass it by you.
I think what we're trying to extend our hand of friendship to Pineville to, to help us, particularly since we've been participating in the union today. Does that answer your satisfaction, or do you have any further questions?
This, this doesn't open, this, open up the door to wax spraying nothing else. It's just for...
No, this is just...
For tomorrow.
You were just, the resolution, which is just the expression of your will, would just say that you agree, sort of like a letter of intent, that when we present an ordinance for that purpose, that you would support it so that we can expend public funds. We're not comfortable expending public funds without a resolution of the governing authority to that.
Question.
The city is offering to pay its back to it, which makes it a question.
I certainly think that it's been a great neighbor. We should help.
I think they're paying it back. I don't see the issue. They're paying the cost of it.
Well, because you have workers who are being borrowed.
I'm just saying, I think it's something we ought to do.
We have authorization. This will take care of nothing.
I think we ought to do it.
Is that a sign? Are we recommend this to the general council? Motion second. All in favor? Do you think you can talk to us?
Yeah, I got one.
Sir?
I have a resolution declaring that special council meetings shall be broadcast for three to two weeks on the government access channel immediately following the broadcast of regular council meetings in the future and to rebroadcast or broadcast the previous special meeting. I so move.
Second discussion, I will second the motion and the whole group of the discussion. What is your, my purpose for making that recommendation?
Is, is to have all of our meetings that'll be before the public, that we have in the public, will be shown on our public access channel by resolution of this council.
Is there, the moment is there any statutory regulation concerning how our meetings are televised on this public channel?
No, Mr. Silver, there is just the historical practice. It's, the position of the legal division is that we should adopt some standard and just abide by that standard. We don't believe that the government access channel, which is paid for by taxpayers, should be used or that the content of it should be arbitrarily regulated. And I think Mr. Fowler's resolution solves that problem.
I think...
The, the actual, if I could just finish real quick, the actual ordinance which creates the government access channel prohibits programs being arbitrarily jerked or shown based on their content. Whatever government action is taken should be televised according to the ordinance itself under the accessibility provision.
I'm learning what you're saying, Mr. Johnson. I think what we need to do before we pass a resolution of ordinance, I think I would like for the administration and council to review the stated ordinance because it dates back to Alpine Cable Vision. I think we need to look at the statutes, what's in place, then come back and review what we need to do to make sure that we're compliant between the administration and council.
I can run upstairs and get it right now if you'd like me to. I can read the specific provision. It's Section Twenty, which says that the content cannot be arbitrarily regulated.
Now, what I'm saying, Mr. Johnson, is complete review of the ordinance itself based on programs, based on schedule, based on what we can, because in prior meetings, we talked about some of the things that we would like to do with government access. So I, I think it would be...
I think we can prove this subject to be compliant, because quite frankly, and I guess the main reason I, really, I wasn't part of that meeting, but then I reflected on it, and if you pick and choose, I think, first, with the public body. Secondly, if we can't conduct ourselves with proper dignity, whether you're on that side of the fence or this side of the fence, there's something wrong with us. And I think we have to be truly professional, but we can screen, and that was the reason we said, public body, let's, let's be, to borrow your phrase, we have to be transparent.
I don't, I don't have a problem with suggestions. I can show them whatever, but I do think we need a concrete policy. What you're saying is that we can't do it arbitrarily.
Correct.
Well, arbitrarily, you would have been showing it then, based on a suggestion. Is that correct? Our position is that you can't just decide which meetings you're going to show, which ones you're not.
But you're saying that you can't arbitrarily show one just because it wants to be shown, or not show one because it wants to be shown.
I disagree with you. I think all of them have to be shown under the free access provision of the contract.
So if we typically hadn't shown it, though, what you're saying is we shouldn't just arbitrarily decide to show it just if we hadn't typically shown it.
Should we do this?
Right. Okay.
I see we're going to put every care, rebroadcast. We show all the meetings. You know, we're making perfect care if we rebroadcast.
Robert.
Every meeting that we show, especially meeting, it is broadcast. It is, you know, the regular council meeting is broadcast. Now, we're not discussing that, so we got to take that out of the kitchen. We got to say, "We rebroadcast these meetings." You understand?
We understand, but there's nothing arbitrary about showing a public meeting. I disagree with Mr. Lawson strongly. We asked that it be shown. The council decided, however it decided it, according to your letter, Mr. Hobbs, by majority, it was decided that it wouldn't be shown. Mr. R, Mr. Johnson suggesting is we need a whole policy. We don't need anything. The citizens want to see the June twelve meeting, and you're denying them to see it.
It was, it was broadcast. I mean, I mean, we showed the meeting.
It's rebroadcast. What's the meaning? What does all of us have to do with rebroadcast?
That's what I'm saying.
Rebroadcast the meeting that the citizens would like to see.
But we did broadcast the meeting, and the citizen had the chance to see it. I'm not saying, Mayor, if I may, a policy. I'm saying, look at the ordinance as it states, as we look at program.
It has an open access provision, and we've already reviewed the whole ordinance, both Mr. Johnson and I. It has an open access provision. We consider the provision to meet that the constituents of, first of all, the citizens on the channel, not the council, the citizens on the channel, and it is a channel designed to show public meetings. Whether there was a policy, which there was not, there was never anything in writing that said rebroadcasting wasn't shown. It was the custom of this body to do that, but if there's an ordinance, custom doesn't come into play.
We didn't say custom.
An ordinance prevails over custom.
Well, let's, let's say this. Two, W, recommendation that be implemented, that...
Two people talking at the same time.
I want to...
Go ahead.
I think, first place, we're thinking specifically of these meetings. I think as we progress, in addition to taking, filming these meetings, there's going to be some other stuff coming that will preempt these from time to time. I think we have to set forth a policy concerning this, plus recording the base for the whole thing. If you will, why don't we hold it for two weeks, incorporate along with a full understanding, bring it back. Are we satisfied with the administration?
We would like the meeting aired. Administration would like the June twelve meeting aired. We think that these are apples and oranges, and we think frankly that this whole discussion is what I would call a straw man. You're discussing something over here about what we need to do for future programming. That has nothing to do with whether June twelve should be aired, Mr. Silver, and you know that.
That's what I'm talking about. Let's assume we are airing this, and then you have a special meeting you want to put out for two weeks, but we have to remove that. I think that it should provide for that privilege.
Except that that issue wasn't at all, wasn't present at the time.
I'm saying, if we're going to update it, why don't we...
Because of blue screen, the citizens see, when I could be watching the June twelve meeting. That's what disengines us.
I'm talking, like, you're clearing up the whole thing. Can we do that? We would love to do that.
Well, no. The, the purpose of this resolution was to formulate a process by which any special meeting that this council has in this room or anywhere else that's recorded would be rebroadcast at the same times as the rebroadcasting of the regular council meeting. That's the sole intent of this resolution. I really don't give a flip about any of the stuff that we're talking about, that we can readdress that at any time. I want this resolution presented tonight, and I want it voted on by roll call vote tonight. If you don't want to show the June twelve meeting, vote no. If you do, vote yes. But this is a very simple resolution, and all it is, is to allow the public, the owners of the, of the channel four, to see our council at our meeting. If you don't want to vote for it, then vote no. If you do want to vote for it, vote yes. It's real simple. It's not, this is not rocket science, and we're qualified to do this.
All right. The purpose of this motion, we have to have a vote on here, by right, when I collect it.
Correct.
Want to say something?
I got, I got one thing to say, and I might be out of left field with this one, but did we or did we not bring the same issue of last council meeting? And it was wrong end, and it was voted down.
It was not.
The same issue.
You're wrong.
You didn't get a second on it, Chuck.
You're exactly right.
You didn't get a second on it, so it can't be brought back this time.
Certainly can. Ask your lawyer.
My thinking is...
It was never acted on.
Chuck, you didn't get a second on it.
It lied, it lied on the floor.
It has to be acted on.
Motion failed, lack of a second. Can it be ordered for the next meeting?
Resolution can be brought up at any time. It takes a full council to put it back on the agenda.
Takes a full council. Yeah. I mean, y'all don't want to do it, don't you? It doesn't make it that...
You didn't put it on the last time, so why go back? Why keep this horse in here?
As a part of order, wait a minute. You mean you can, the, the, a motion that failed can be brought up by the side of the motioner that failed at any time, is what you just suggested to the body?
The last meeting, Mr. Lawson, the full council was not present. I don't think the vote reflected the views of the whole council.
It was a core.
It was a core.
It wasn't a core.
It was a core.
That's bad information you just gave out.
Mr. Lawson, it has nothing to do with that. You don't want...
I mean, I want to show, I want to show. I'm with, I'm with Mr. Fowler. I don't have problems with him. But we just got some bad information, though.
No, he's talking about the difference between a resolution and an ordinance. When ordinance does dock...
Oh, you the city attorney that we have on here?
No, sir.
But you don't mean the public? You're not the city attorney, man. I'm talking to the city attorney, please.
We're talking about the difference between a resolution and ordinance, Mr. Lawson. If you don't want the meeting showed, vote no tonight. Don't hide behind procedure. Just say you don't want it shown. Why don't all of y'all say why you don't want it shown?
Are you giving legal advice and our opinion?
I'm giving my legal opinion.
Okay. Okay. Just make sure it's legal advice, not an opinion.
This will be brought up at the meeting?
In the commission?
Can I say something? I think we ought to have a policy to show these meetings. Therefore, I have no problems with it and no problem showing another one. What I did have a problem with, if we typically had not shown them, based on what I've been told before I got on the council, typically have not shown special meetings. You just said arbitrarily, you cannot decide.
When was the discussion about typically not had? Well, you interrupted me, Mr....
I said it before, before I got on the council. It must have been, must have taken place before I got on the council.
When was the discussion about whether this followed existing policy or not had? When was that discussion had? Because it wasn't in a public forum.
I didn't say policy. Did you hear me say policy?
Yes, I did earlier, sir. You said the word policy.
Well, if I did, if it typically hadn't been shown, let's find a way to show the meeting, Mr. Fowler, every meeting, on the same page.
Are we other than, yes?
So I have no problem with that, but to arbitrarily, as the attorney just suggested, show a meeting because I want it shown, Richard Bradley, the mayor, wanted it shown, because those two wanted it shown, to arbitrarily show it? He just said that's illegal and inappropriate.
Mr. Lawson, if you show all meetings like what this resolution does, it can never be arbitrary, because by definition, you are not picking and choosing, sir.
I said it's a point.
Use your words carefully.
And we'll bring it up to the council meeting.
I said it. Show every one of them.
All right. That's what it said, and we're bringing up the meeting this time, okay?
Yeah. Finally. Yeah.
All right. Anything else to come before? We have four minutes over, and I don't like to do that. Is there...
Yes, Mr. Silver.
Go ahead.
Review the fast-track projects, what I would like to hear from the administration is, in the free meeting frame of what we have appropriated, the recreational, I'd like to hear a report, besides what we're working on with water, spray parks, to hear what we plan to do to upgrade recreational facilities within the city. So, if we can have that from administration, something we'll put at the next council, later.
That's a good suggestion, of course, our place getting fuller and fuller, you got about a hundred fifty million dollars here, it means fifty-five million dollars, but you take that under mind, anything else to come before our committee? If not, we stand adjourned.